Ready. You ready to hammer? Get your hammer out Nancy. Welcome. Welcome to this evening's Board of Education meeting. This is a particularly special meeting because we're joined by our semester graduates. So good to see all of you here tonight. I'd like to point out that the agenda can be seen on that screen in front of you and you can follow along there. Also, if you want to talk tonight, you're welcome to sign up to speak. There are two sessions of public comment on the agenda. The first one, which is Agenda Item 7.01, is for comments that are related to things that are on the agenda tonight. The second portion of public comment is found on the agenda at Item 14.01, and that is for comments for the general good of the order. You are limited to five minutes per speaker, but we would be happy to hear from you. And with that, I'm going to call this evening's meeting to order and ask Laura to please call the roll.
Mrs. Crowe. Dr. French.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
He's not here.
Mrs. Nestor Baker.
Here.
Mrs. Davis.
Davidson.
Davidson. And Mr. Velardo.
Here.
Thank you Laura. Laura is filling in for us tonight. The Treasurer is not able to be with us because he's doing some other business. Please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance with us tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll move on in the agenda to Item 3, Item 3.01, under District Highlights and Recognizations, Winter Graduates. Dr. Kellogg?
President Nestor Baker, I believe first we have to do a motion for the Board.
You want to pull these up? Okay.
Yeah. You have to approve the list.
Ah, we haven't approved the list yet?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to approve the list of all the names of the graduates?
I make that motion to approve all of our new graduates.
Great, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second to approve the list, Laura, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The list has been approved. And moving on, we have graduates from Central, North, and South. Dr. Kellogg?
Thank you President Nestor Baker. Welcome to all the friends and family this evening for our winter graduates. It's exciting to have a packed house here, particularly on this cold winter evening, so thank you for braving the elements and coming out to share in this celebration. So we'll get official with the confirmation. President Nestor Baker and members of the Board of Education, distinguished former and current faculty and staff, honored guests, and proud families of the graduates of Central, North, and South High Schools. The state of Ohio establishes in law two requirements for earning a high school diploma. First, the successful completion of a rigorous academic curricular program. Two, proficient competencies in five disciplines that compromise the Ohio graduation test. Ladies and gentlemen, seated here before you are the young men and women who have now satisfied those requirements. The administration of Westerville City Schools has verified and the Board of Education has unanimously approved their candidacy for graduation. And so, it is with great pleasure as Superintendent of Westerville City Schools that I confer to each student of Westerville Schools State of Ohio Diploma of Completion. And now to officially commence the ceremony in recognition with the presentation of the class, Mr. Scott Reeves, Executive Director of Secondary Academic Affairs. Scott?
Good evening. This is always one of my favorite meetings, and as you see behind me, as Dr. Kellogg mentioned, we have a packed house. And you look at the support that these kids have, I think this is in no small part a reason why they're sitting before us today. It is an amazing attribute to our community and to the families of these young folks. And from the time that they are in kindergarten to this moment right now, this is a culmination of everything that we have worked for, for them. And we have some that are going to continue their education, we have some that are going to go right into workforce, and we have a young man that'll be taken off of Parris Island to serve in the Marines. So we're really, really pleased with that. And at this point, each of the principals are here to say a few congratulatory words and well wishes to our graduates. So with that, Mr. Spinner from Westerville Central.
Mr. Reeves, thank you. Good evening President Nestor Baker, Vice President Davidson, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, members of the community, family, and friends. Tonight, we're here to celebrate the accomplishments of our young people and also to wish them well as they head off to the next chapter of their lives. I know that as the principal of Central High School, I am proud of our Warhawks, our Warriors, and our Wildcats for reaching this ceremony here tonight and for making sure they are finished what they started. When they entered kindergarten many years ago, they never dreamed about being high school graduates. Well, now that dream is a reality. This accomplishment did not just happen, and it was not an accident. There were many, many teachers, friends, neighbors, parents, and maybe even a principal or two there for them to help them when they needed some guidance, or maybe even a kick in the rear to get them started. So while this is a night to congratulate our students, it is also a night that I would remind them to give a hug, a nod of thanks, and maybe even a Warhawk high five to that person or group of people that helped them get here this evening. I want to close by saying once again how proud I am of each and every one of them, whether they're a Warhawk, a Wildcat, or a Warrior, and leave you with the words of former President Kennedy who said, "Those that work hard to fulfill their dreams and to accomplish their goals are not the ones that we need to worry about. It is those that start something with an end in mind and do not finish, but rather stray and go on to something else time and time again. Those are the ones that we need to be concerned about and keep an eye on as we continue to push towards success in our own lives." Those students here tonight are the ones that have accomplished their goals and have worked hard to fulfill this part of their dreams. I wish you nothing but the best as you move forward in your lives and in your career. Congratulations, and at this time, it is my honor to bring Mr. Kirk Yancey, the Principal of Westerville North, to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Kirk Yancey, and I'm the Principal at Westerville North High School. It is my pleasure to be able to publicly say congratulations to all of our graduates tonight and to wish you good luck in all that you do. On behalf of the entire Westerville North High School learning community and all of the other district employees who have affected your life, please accept our congratulations for your accomplishment. We are all very proud of the Westerville Central Warhawks, Westerville North Warriors, and the Westerville South Wildcats who are becoming alumni this evening. We encourage you to always push yourself to keep moving forward regardless of the obstacles that you may face. In the words of the great Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "If you can't fly, then run; and if you can't run, then walk; if you can't walk, then crawl." But whatever you do, ladies and gentlemen, whatever you do, you have to move forward. We wish you the best of luck in the future. Now it is my pleasure to turn the program over to Westerville South High School Principal, Mr. Steve Anderson.
Good evening, everyone. It may be a cold night out there in the polar vortex, but it's a very warm night in our hearts whenever we get to congratulate seniors at all three Westerville High Schools upon their graduation. Like Mr. Spinner and Mr. Yancey, I too congratulate you on your tenacity and perseverance as you have pursued and now achieved your high school diploma. And we hope that you are very well prepared for your college, your career, your service in the military, whatever it is that is to come next in your lives. And now for the moment you've been waiting for, I call back Mr. Todd Spinner as we distribute our diplomas. And Dr. Kellogg and the Board of Education, if you would come forward to congratulate these fine young men and women as well. When your names are called, graduates, if you would please head up and begin by shaking Dr. Kellogg's hand first. Our first graduate this evening, Ms. Kadiatu Bengora, congratulations. Our next graduate, Mr. Kenneth Edward Whaley, congratulations.
And now from Westerville North High School, it is my pleasure to introduce Mr. Arman Hagnazari. And Mr. Keith Robert Lewis II.
And finally, from South High School, we congratulate Ms. Kasar Hasam Ahmed. And Ms. Madison Nicole Stewart Spencer. Ladies and gentlemen, how about a big Westerville round of applause for all of our graduates.
I didn't realize that Tommy had come in, so I apologize. We have one more diploma this evening for a Westerville North graduate, Mr. Thomas Austin Dean Vargo.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and Dr. Kellogg. We'll turn it back to you for our closing.
I'll be brief because time with family is more important than this. So congratulations to all the graduates, to their friends and family that are here, to the teachers and staff that supported them. We wish you well, know that you've earned something, nobody can ever take away from you. Build from this, move forward, and continue to prosper. Thank you for being here this evening. As exciting as the rest of the agenda is, if you have dinner reservations or plans, feel free to exit at this time, and we'll wait for the commotion to settle out, and then we'll begin the meeting again. So thank you again for coming out this cold evening, congratulations.
All right, let's move on in our agenda. Item 3.02, High Progress School of Honor. And this will start with a resolution recognizing Huber Ridge Elementary School as a High Progress School of Honor by the Ohio Department of Education. And the resolution says, cited as an outstanding example of what is possible when students, educators, parents, and community members work together believing that all students can succeed. We congratulate you for this outstanding accomplishment, thank you for bringing honor and distinction to our district, and wish you continued success. And that is dated January 27, and it has the names of all the members of the Board of Education. Dr. Kellogg?
Thank you President Nestor Baker. It's my pleasure at this time, and it is David Baker, Executive Director of Elementary Education, to recognize his staff and administration from Huber Ridge Elementary School. Mr. Baker?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Hendricks. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting to you one of our elementary schools who recently received recognition from the Ohio Department of Education. At this time, will Huber Ridge Principal Chris Blados, please, join me here at the podium? In December, the Ohio Department of Education recognized Huber Ridge Elementary School as a High Progress School of Honor. Huber Ridge is one of 37 schools across the state of Ohio to be recognized by ODE for scoring in the top 10 percent of schools as ranked by Gains in Reading and Mathematics Combined Proficiency in all tested grades for the past five years. Adequate yearly progress, value-added measures of student growth, and the local report card ratings were also considered when determining this recognition. According to State Superintendent of Instruction Richard Ross, "High Progress Schools of Honor establish an educational goal for their students and continue to pursue and exceed that goal each year. The principals, teachers, parents, and community members provide a high-quality education and believe that children can overcome significant challenges and that they can learn." Mr. Blados, would you quickly introduce, not so quickly because I think the entire staff is here, introduce your team who are here tonight, please?
Yes, just wanted to say thank you again for honoring Huber Ridge. I'd like to say there's some magic formula of leading, but really it goes back to the hard work of all the people behind me and their dedication to all the students. So first, we have Dr. Aloma Gibbs, who's our Assistant Principal, and then Karen Krizniewski, Brian Shanks, Erica Besh, Melissa Workman, Caroline Funt, Natalie Bentz, Amber Corn, Erin Berg, Stacy Davis, Sally Raymond, Kathy Gowen, Mary Jane McDonough, Denise Mundy, Sherry Horner, Patty Reither, Debbie Miller, and Mark Bruger as well. And then also behind Mr. Bruger is Gertie Glass, who is a special coordinator but was with Huber for the past 12 years before that.
And that was quite a quiz considering Mr. Blados has only been in the district for six months. Good job on that. Again, I congratulate the entire Huber Ridge learning community for its continued success and commitment to learning. I invite you all to visit Huber Ridge and see excellence in action. Again, congratulations, and certainly I think it would be wonderful if you would take the opportunity to shake each of these teachers' hands because they have worked hard and deserve it. Thank you.
Definitely.
Come on down.
Mr. Blados? I know your staff's anxious because the call on school tomorrow's already gone out, so I'm sure whatever show they're taping they want to get back to, but congratulations to them, that's outstanding work and you and your leadership. Yeah. I told them they got the day off, everybody else had to come in. So congratulations, fine work. Mr. Baker, thank you for bringing them forward this evening for that recognition. Thank you. Have a good evening, drive safely going home.
The next item on the agenda is Item 3.03, which is School Board Recognition. And because I really feel a bit tenuous about recognizing myself, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kellogg.
I get the pleasure of bringing forward this recognition. For those who don't realize, and I believe we have a placard up front, January is School Board Recognition Month, so on behalf of the staff, the administration, the community, we want to take a moment to thank you for being willing to serve in such an important and time-consuming role. For those that have returned from having been here before, you know exactly what we're talking about. For those that are new, you're learning very quickly just how busy this is. And for those who have been with us for a while, we really appreciate the leadership. And looking forward, I know that personally, for me, seven months in now, I'm really looking forward to the teamwork we're going to do together and move forward on behalf of children in the community. So with that, we have little certificates for your walls at home, which I'm sure will get buried, but they read, "In sincere appreciation for exemplary leadership and service to public schools," and then presented to each of the board members, I'll bring this around to you. So I'd like to ask for a round of applause and recognition of our fine board members.
Thank you. See why I didn't want to talk about it myself. All right, moving on to Item 4 on the agenda, that's Discussion and Approval of Minutes. And 4.01 is to discuss and approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Education on December 9th, December 16th, and January 13th, 2014. Could I have a motion on this, please? Thank you. The motion, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, you will notice that two of these meetings were conducted before we were formally sworn in as board members. However, that does not in any way preclude us from moving these minutes ahead. Are there any comments, questions, or corrections to the minutes this evening?
Nope.
Harry Nun, Ms. Hendricks, would you call the roll?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
And Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the minutes have been approved, thank you. Moving on the agenda to Item 5, Announcements for this evening, and I'm going to ask Mr. Velardo if he will read the announcements tonight.
Thank you, Madam President. January's Word of the Month is Attitude, defined by Webster as "a manner showing one's feelings, or thoughts, or disposition." Couple of announcements I want to make you aware of. It's time to make plans to participate in the 14th Annual Westerville Community Bowl-a-thon scheduled for Saturday, February 8 at the Columbus Square Bowling Palace, which is located 5705 Forest Hills Boulevard. Funds raised benefit the Westerville Chamber Foundation, the Westerville Education Foundation, and the Westerville Symphony. GoToWestervilleBowl.com for more information and to register. As a little side note, Dr. Kellogg and I have a little side bet about this, and we'll detail that later. Yeah, oh yeah, striking out. At 3:00 PM on Sunday, February 9, the community of Westerville will present the 5th Annual Jukebox Review, a variety show featuring local and regional talent performing music from the 40s, 50s, 60s, and 70s. Tickets cost $10, with all proceeds benefiting Honor Flight Columbus, nonprofit organization dedicated to the celebration of our nation's World War II and Korean veterans, who will be admitted for free. The event will take place in the Westerville North High School Auditorium. Westerville City Schools are preparing to begin the registration process for our next kindergarten class. If your child will be five years old on or before September 30, 2014, you may register him or her for kindergarten. Kindergarten 101 will take place concurrently at Faust and Hawthorne Elementary Schools at 7:00 PM Tuesday, February 11. Parents are encouraged to attend this meeting to learn more about the kindergarten process. Parents can pick up numbered registration packets at their homeschool on Wednesday, February 19, and also sign up for a time to return the required documents to the Enrollment and Family Resource Center. Individual registration and appointments will be held from February 24 through March 28. Details can be found at the district's website, www.wcsoh.org. The Westerville City School District has published its 2014 calendar this year featuring student artwork and photographs. The award-winning publication was underwritten by Ohio Health. For quick reference, it contains important dates with color screens marking the days when school is not in session. It also includes a general fund financial summary from 2012-2013 fiscal year and a directory of buildings. Calendars are available at all Westerville City Schools in a number of locations throughout the community. Summer school dates for 2014 are as follows. The first high school summer session will run from June 9 through the 27. Second term is June 30 through July 22. The full term will be held June 9 through July 27 with no school on July 3rd and 4th. The Summer Splash Enrichment Program will take place from June 2 through 6. OGT intervention is scheduled for June 5 through 13. OGT testing will occur on June 16 for reading, June 17 for math, June 18 for writing, June 19 for science, and June 20 for social studies. OGT makeups will be offered on June 23. Summer intervention for grades 1 to 8 is planned for June 5 through July 2. And Almost Kindergarten is slated for July 28 through August 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Everything you ever wanted to know about Westerville City Schools. Moving on in the agenda to Number 6, Reports for this evening. The first item under Reports, Item 6.01, is the Audit Report. And I believe that Al Hammond is here this evening with a report from the Audit Committee.
Good evening. Madam President, Board Members, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Hendricks, and Administrative Staff in the residents of Westerville, I am pleased to report that I am representing our Audit Committee of Mike Borowitz, Tiffany Stubbs, Gwen Nichols, and Rebecca Vesquez-Gillings in presenting the results of the financial audit conducted by the Ohio Auditor of State for the period ending June 30, 2013. The audit was conducted in accordance with General Accepted Auditing Standards and those standards applicable to financial audits contained in the Comptroller General of the United States Audit Requirements for Governmental Audit Standards. I'm happy to report that for the third year in a row, the Auditor of State issued an unqualified opinion in regards to the financial statements and also major federal program compliance. The audit found no material control weaknesses reported on the financial statement level, no significant deficiencies in internal control reported at the financial statement level, and also no noncompliance at the federal statement level. No material internal control weaknesses reported for major federal programs, no significant deficiencies in internal control reported for the major federal programs, and most importantly, no reportable findings. There were no corrective actions required, there were no findings, findings for recovery, or questioned cost. The audit was officially released by the Auditor of State on December 17, 2013, and can be viewed in its entirety at the Auditor of State website. I know that I just spoke a great deal of auditees to most people here, in the crowd. So what does all that mean? Well, it means simply that the district audit, there were no findings. In other words, a clean review of the In other words, a clean review of the financial operations of the school board and the school year ended June 30, 2013. I give my best regards to the financial staff. They did an excellent job. They were recognized by the Auditor of State at that meeting. And the members of the Audit Committee wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to serve on the committee, and appreciate all the staff members' help throughout the process. Personally, this is my third year on the Audit Committee, so I'll be rolling off. This is my last presentation to the board in this position, but I wanted to thank the board for the opportunity to serve. And I'm open to any questions.
Questions for Al?
It just sounds wonderful. I thank you for serving and for being willing to spend three years doing that.
Thank you, Dr. French.
It sounds like we have a wonderful staff, and appreciate all the good things that they watch over our money. So, thank you.
In my job, I oversee over 150 audits that look like this school board's audit. And to get an audit like this, especially three years in a row, is one very high peak to reach. So again, my best for the financial stability of the district and the abilities of our CFO and his staff, so.
Thank you, Al. And if I'm not wrong about this, you can sit out of here and then you can ask to come back on the Audit Committee for another three years.
If the board would like me to come back, I'd be happy to do so, exactly.
Thank you very much. This is superb news.
Absolutely.
It really is, especially when we think of you, say, as three years. This is something you just really don't hear of that often in the life of schools, because there are so many moving parts and so many moving people, that it's very, very difficult to achieve this level of excellence. And three years in a row is truly amazing. So thank you for sharing that with us. Thank you to the CFO and the staff.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item seven on the agenda. Item seven is the first portion of public comments. Do we have the sheet?
Apologize, we have to back up one.
Oh, I forgot about your report, John.
It's okay.
I apologize. And after you recognized me so nicely.
I, well...
John, would you like to make the report while Mark brings me the list, anyway? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for the opportunity. President Nestor Baker, it's my pleasure. Two things, one informally, I know what the weather conditions have been the last few days, and the pressures, our decisions as a school system to move forward. Of course, we had a late start today. We are closed for tomorrow. If you haven't seen that, I'm not predicting Wednesday. I have a great understanding of, a great appreciation for the pressures that puts on people, particularly for our students who have to walk. When you start talking about wind chill factors, snow-covered sidewalks, et cetera, also considering bus transportation, high school students driving themselves, parents driving kids to school, it can be a tricky situation. So we give a lot of consideration. I know some of the decisions recently, for some folks, they might have had a different opinion. I appreciate that. I value student safety. I understand the implications of those decisions, and I take the heat when it comes, so, and the cold when it comes. That said, what I wanted to do tonight, I wanted to share a little bit regarding third-grade reading guarantee data. And the reason I'm doing this is, there's two sets of data that have been discussed in the press in the last couple of months, and I just want to kind of remind the board and the public the difference between those. First of all, I'd like to remind everybody of this. The fall third-grade reading scores that we look at is the third-grade reading test given to students in the fall for a school year that doesn't end until the spring. So these fall scores are misleading as it relates to third-grade reading regulation because they are testing third graders before they've taken third grade. The actual test scores that matter to third-grade reading and the retention portion of third-grade reading are what happened in the spring. So a lot of attention get paid to the fall as if that's the money test. That's not the money test. That allows us the opportunity to see what students might be behind and where we might need to do interventions and get a handle on our numbers. So that's the first part. So while it's an early test, it's helpful in identifying students who need interventions, and it's the spring OAA that determines if a student must be retained per the third-grade reading guarantee regulations. And there's two sets of data that get reported. The first one that came out was that is the total percentage of third graders who in the fall did not meet the cut score on the fall test. And for our school district, that number is 24%. And that was reported in a This Week article. So that's the total percentage of third graders who, back in the fall, before they've taken third grade, or completed third grade, hadn't met the third-grade standard for reading. 24%. I think it's about 115 students. There's a second set. The second set is a percentage absent of what the law describes as exempted students. The law exempts some students from the mandatory retention component of the third-grade reading guarantee based on child status either as a special needs student with an IAP, or as an English as a second language student. And by law, these students may not be retained if they fail to meet the third-grade reading cut score this coming spring. So when you factor out exempted students for Westerville City Schools, the percentage of students who failed to meet the cut score and did not fall into one of the two exemption categories was actually 10.7%. So 24% of our third graders failed to meet the cut score in the fall. Of those, 14% are exempt, and 10.7% need to improve their reading performance in order to meet the third-grade reading cut score this spring. So it's two different numbers. And the reason I point that out was, there was a This Week article that printed the 24%. That's all students regardless of exemptions. There was a Columbus Dispatch article that came out later that provided a listing of local school districts and their performance in the fall testing. Normal Habit, Columbus Dispatch, prints it all, ranks everybody. Using the percentage of students who missed the cut score absent of exempted students, on that list, only three other school districts, three other local school districts, Dublin, Upper Arlington, and Grandview Heights, had a lower percentage of students that missed the cut score. In other words, our 10.7% without the exempted students, which is what the law says, fared very well locally and was only outperformed by three other school districts. And I think they were 10 points somethings, I've forgotten the other one. Grandview Heights had the best at 6%. And I think that's an important difference, as well as if you look at those school districts. So I'm sharing this with the board and the community because there have been improper comparisons. In one instance, our 24% number, which includes exempted students, was compared with other districts using their percentage without exempted students. In other words, our 24% number was lined up against someone else's 6% number. That 6% number was absent the exempted, our 24% include the exempted. I'm not happy with either number. We can get better, but the comparisons, I think, should be fairly done. So I hope that provides some clarification with those numbers are. Bottom line, we want to see those numbers improve. We want to see those numbers improve before we get to the spring, that 10% be at zero, all those students be eligible to move forward. And we want to take those students that are currently exempted and move them forward. That's what the High Progress Reward that you saw Huber Ridge get is all about, moving students. Because the only finish line that matters in all this is the one you saw earlier tonight, graduation. The rest of it are just markers to the most important thing we do, which is graduate students. So a kid who misses the third-grade reading guarantee in the fall of their third grade and may not make it in the fall and the spring of their third grade, what I still want is graduation on time and reading at grade level. Give me the whole 12 years to get them completed. Don't just hold us accountable to that last piece. So that's the most important mark to me. I just want to share that because that's been done, and we know the numbers. So appreciate the time, and thought that might be helpful.
Could I just ask you a question about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So for clarification, is that 24% are the only students, then, that will need to take that second test in the spring? The others that have already passed it in the fall would not need to retake, right?
Remember that that third-grade reading guarantee is not the proficient mark. It's actually less than the proficient mark. So, and I believe, I'm an old high school guy, and I'm going to look to Dave Baker, correct me if I'm wrong, they all take the spring test again regardless of how they did in the fall. Everybody takes it again in the spring because that's actually when third grade is tested.
I see.
For example, you don't take a fourth grade test, the fourth grade OAA, in the fall of fourth grade. You just take it in the spring. It's only the third grading reading component that we do a fall testing to see where they're at, but it's really the spring test that counts from that standpoint.
Okay, thank you.
Did I get that right, Dave?
So I would assume, David, or Dr. Kellogg, really, the fall, it's setting up the benchmark. You know, this is where we are right now. And it identifies kids that on task, on target, some that are a little bit behind, so, I mean, I'm not sure...
I think that's exactly correct. If you read the legislation, students who are off track in the fall have to have an individual reading intervention plan. And so this is part of that piece in the fall.
It gives us a benchmark for who then needs. Awesome, okay, thank you.
The other students who fall under the third-grade reading guarantee are K through three, excuse me, K1 and 2, based on other assessments, because there isn't an assessment that happened in the fall. Those students have their reading assessed in the fall by that law and our policy. And if they fail to be on track, they have a reading plan as well that we implement through the rest of the school year. But they don't have the test yet until the spring of their third-grade year. That's the one that counts towards retention.
Thank you.
But if they've already passed, see, then my question was to try to avoid some of the testing that our kids have to do. So if they've already passed it in the, you know, in the spring, I mean, the fall, why would they have to, you know, except for to document the percentage, where we stand on the score, I guess, but, you know, that's the reason I was asking that question.
It does show growth for a student. And it's a more accurate measure of how they're doing against the third-grade curriculum because it's taken at the right time.
Right. Okay, thank you.
It's kind of like calling a football game at the end of the first quarter, not playing the other three quarters and finding out what the actual score will be.
If you're good at the beginning. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Any other questions? Thank you, I appreciate that information, and I appreciate the clarification. When we come in contact with rumors and misstatements that are out there, we need to address them as best we can. Now, item number seven on the agenda. This is the first portion of public comments. And public comments at this section are focused on items that are on the agenda this evening, on the business agenda. And it is restricted to that only. You are allotted five minutes to make comments or remarks at this time if you have signed up. And we do have the ability to ask you questions or clarification, should we so choose. The names of individuals shall not be used as part of a complaint or a concern being stated to the board publicly, and speakers addressing the board shall not violate the fairness doctrine as set forth in 47 CFR Section 76.209. Persons wishing to address the board during either public comment sections must register names prior to the commencement of the public comment section. With all of that said, we have one individual signed up to speak this evening, and that is Eric Zwilling.
I speak to two items on tonight's agenda, 9.13, and also 16, all of them. First, welcome. Congratulations on the election. Glad to have an upgrade on board to go along with the upgrade on superintendent. It's never had a better future in Westerville school systems. Item 9.13, I'd like to respectfully request 9.13 be pulled from the personnel consent agenda and made a separate item. Like to see the wisdom in having that opportunity for people to abstain from votes as they see fit. Item number 16, if I could have an elaboration on the thought process of moving the board meetings to this location. I'm really agnostic as to which school that we have it at, but I'm not sure if this is the most inclusive building and arena for the public to come in and see what's going on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zwilling. Any follow-up, board members? If not, we'll move on to item number eight on the agenda, financial reports. This 801 is a resolution to approve the financial reports and investments as of December 2013. And the financial report lists all funds ending December 2013. Could I have a motion, please?
Still moved.
And a second?
Sorry.
Second. Thank you. With a motion and a second on the financial reports, Assistant Treasurer, would you like to address this?
Yes, I'd just like to report, as of December 31, 2013, for the general fund, we have year-to-date receipts of $78,604,000, year-to-date expenditures of $66,991,000, which leaves us an ending cash balance as of December 31 of $28,574,000. For all funds, year-to-date receipts $100,138,000, year-to-date expenditures $97,304,000. Ending cash balance for all funds of $43,516,000.
Comments? Requests for clarification? Hearing none. Laura, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Davidson, yes. Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. The financial report has been approved. Moving on to item nine, which is the Personnel Consent Agenda. And we have a number of items on the Personnel Consent Agenda tonight, and they go from 9.01 through 9.14. And could I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
As a whole?
As a whole.
Yes.
Hang on a minute, we'll get to 9.13.
I move that we consider the consent agenda.
Can I have a second on the consent calendar?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, we've moved the consent calendar for discussion. I would ask that item 9.13 be pulled out for a separate vote when the vote does occur. With that, turn it over to you, Mr. Jakowski.
Thank you, President Nestor Baker, Superintendent Kellogg, and members of the board. Before you this evening is our monthly consent agenda. I do want to make note of a couple of items. 9.03, it's a retirement classified. We do have Brenda Burner that is retiring from a food service worker at Walnut Springs. That'll be effective March 1st. 9.04, our certificated retirements. We do have three individuals, and this is kind of the beginning of the process as we start seeing those retirements come forward for the end of the school year. We have Ned Kurtzeder, he's a math teacher at Walnut Springs, and Debbie Petrosi, who's a third-grade teacher at McVeigh Elementary School, retiring effective the end of the school year. We do have Lou Sarr, who's a psychologist in the district, and he'll make an early exit. He'll be exiting the 1st of March with an April 1st effective date of his retirement. 9.11, employment of classified, we do have four new hires, and they are due to resignations of current positions, so we're filling those positions that we've had individuals resign from. Additionally, 9.12, we have two teachers that we're hiring, that's an ESL teacher and a special education teacher. Those are areas where we must fill those positions. We can't do any type of consolidating, so we are asking you to consider the employment of those two teachers. I also want to point out that we're going to ask for two resident educator mentors additional. We brought a whole bunch forward at the beginning of the school year. Since the beginning of the school year, we've had some individuals that have been hired on that require us to have that, or that we do provide that mentor for those individuals because they're working under their resident educator license program. We'll talk about 913 later. And 914, last one, is a one-time payment for classified. Just want to point out that you'll see four individuals, I believe there are four individuals on there, for interpreting services. Those are biannual approvals that we bring to you for consideration for interpreting for the second semester of the school year. It's my recommendation at the board, accept the sections of the consent calendar as presented to you this evening.
Thank you. Are there questions about any of these components? Hearing none. Laura, I'd ask you to call the roll on all of the items on the consent agenda except for 9.13.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. Thank you. And now, 9.13. And Kurt, before you say anything about that, I want to address it. The reason we have called this out for a separate vote is because my daughter's name is on it, as receiving, as she is contractually eligible to do so, a payment for facilitation that she did of seminars on waiver day. I contacted the Ethics Commission and asked very quickly if it were possible for me to vote on that. The Ethics Commission is very, very clear about the ability for a sitting board member to vote on issues that are related to contracts as long as the employee is a member of a particular class. With that in mind, I do believe that I could vote on this particular item. However, I have decided to abstain on this item tonight until I get additional clarification so that there can be no question regarding whether I am permitted to vote on my daughter's one-time payment, which arises as a result of her being a member of a particular class. With that in mind, would you like to talk about that?
You know, I don't think I need to say another thing. You know, I don't think I need to say another thing. Not that hard, Dr. Nestor Baker. You did an excellent job, and I do appreciate and look forward to hearing your response, because there's, there's egg opinions, and there's a lot of different things out there on that. So it'll be interesting to hear. But appreciate you bringing that forward. A couple other items in nine point one three, you will be voting and considering another set of mentors. There are orientation mentors. Those are for, and we didn't bring those to you at the beginning of the school year, because we wanted to make sure that folks are going to need them. Those, it's a one-time pay for those teachers that have been brought on the staff that are working under licenses other than the resident educator license. So they may be working under a five-year professional license, they may be under a permit. So it just depends what they have when we hire them. Those are not individuals that are, like I said, working under that resident educator license program. They are new to our district, however. So they are new to the, so City School District, and new to the building that they're in as well. So we do, it's much less than, it's much, more or less than our resident educators, because the time that they invest and spend with those individuals are, are less than that of a resident educator program. You talked about the waiver day presentation. We have several staff members that are being compensated for their time and preparation for our very successful waiver day that was held back on January tenth. And it goes for work that is done outside of their contract as opposed to work during the school day. So that's, they fulfill their obligation as far as their contractual requirements during the school day, and then in preparation for us to be able to put on the tremendous professional development opportunity that we have for all of our staff, they are compensated at a very modest amount. And then there is an adjustment that you'll see. It's an adjustment due to an increase enrollment in our extra school tutoring program. Really a good problem to have, when I say problem, because I don't like putting adjustments on, because that means that something is being different than what you approved prior. But I am happy to say, or pleased to say, that the reason that we have to adjust this is because we've had a tremendous response to our extra school tutoring programs. They are grant dollars for the third grade reading guarantee. We are increasing the number of staff members. And what we wanted to do is make sure that the one-time payment that we're asking for, asking the board to consider, matches what it is that we're having people perform. So we've had an increase. So we've got to have a total amount that correlates with that number as well in order, so we can pay those folks. It's my recommendation that you approve section nine point one three of the consent agenda as presented to you this evening.
Questions or comments? Would you call the roll on nine point one three? No, it falls into the same motion.
All right. All right. Dr. French?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Abstain. The personnel consent agenda has been approved, all items. Moving on, number ten is policy consent, and we have no items there this evening, which means we move on to eleven. We are moving along fairly quickly. And this is old business. Eleven point zero one is final reading on the recommendation to adopt the revised nine through twelve English Language Arts Course of Study. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Dr. Kellogg?
President Nestor Baker, this completes the alignment of our English Course of Studies with the state's new learning standards. This is ninth through twelfth grade. I believe this is English II, the honors and regular, and aligns our curriculum with the new state standards, and ensures that our students will be presented the appropriate written curriculum, be prepared for the impending new state assessments, which may or may not come into play next year, but will be coming in the future.
I have some questions. Do others have questions? I haven't wrote them down.
Ask away. If I don't have the answers, I'll.
That's right.
Lean on staff.
I have some questions. Well, I just ask the questions. It'd be the easiest thing to do. What I am wondering about, as I listened to the first presentation around this, I wondered if there could be some further clarification regarding how these revisions, whether it's for the English Language Arts, or whether it's for the other disciplines that we will be voting on this evening. I am wondering how those actually fit into the vertical course of study, K through twelve. I'm also interested in knowing how these particular courses, as they are revised, align horizontally across the disciplines as we talk about that. That's my first wonder. And then we'll get to some other wonderings after that.
So as to the first question, the vertical articulation, K through twelve, little history. Two thousand and ten, the state adopts a new learning standards, including Common Core and Language Arts and Math. Two thousand and eleven, Westerville and all the other school districts who are paying attention start to revise their curriculum to align to that. In our instance, the history is that we began with the elementary-age students and moved revisions through grade levels upward, and that's why you're seeing the secondary now, so that the student experience through those years would be such that the curriculum was being revised in front of them as they came through the system. And by the time it was done, now, our curriculum would be aligned, and the experiences students that they've had in the classroom would be aligned, so that they prepared, be prepared for the new state assessments, which are scheduled for next year. So that moves it up K through twelve. And there are tricky points in there. Unfortunately, the state's decision to revise new state standards and the, and the normal process, which is usually a five-year cycle for your curriculum revision, the state's policy change didn't necessarily align with individual school districts' five-year cycles. I know that, because I would face the same problem when I was in southwestern city schools. In terms of horizontally across, if you take a look at the new standards, and you take a look at components of Common Core standards, there's a lot of language in there related to, for example, use of informational text. The easiest way to describe this would be that we want students to have the ability to, to read text, analyze that text, analyze its accuracy, analyze its validity, and present the information in a consolidated fashion. So those efforts around the critical thinking skills, the writing skills, the ability to read informational text, the ability to make meaning out of those things cross through horizontally between those content areas. In math, you'll read about mathematical practices that are consistent across, but they also have implications for science. Accuracy, for example, and precision. Precision of measurement in science is an important tool. Ever remember reading the meniscus in lab? So the accuracy of numbers, remember scientific notation? So those are the pieces that, that start to become important, both in our math classrooms and our science classrooms. The ability to read informational texts. So let's take social studies, where we may be reading original documents and trying to decipher the meaning to those and extend them to present day. So what was written in the American Constitution X number of years ago, how does it apply today in modern-day society? And more importantly, what implications does it have for future society? So the ability to do those pieces cuts across all of those disciplines about thinking skills, I think would probably be the best way to put it. So we want to see those skills be built horizontally across disciplines as the kids move through the system, so that they have those skill sets as they prepare for the new assessments, which we've shared some with the board. We start to get a sense of just what those might start meeting. You start to see what the importance of some of those skills are. So it goes beyond the content and gets to skills that students need to have. Does that help?
It does help. And I think for the help of my brain, and for others, as they watch us moving ahead, as we make curricular decisions, it would probably be a good idea if we do share repeatedly what it looks like K twelve, to take English, what it looks like K twelve, to take math, so that we have a sense of what, what the whole is in a Westerville education.
From, I don't mean, one of the, one of the tools that people in the community might find helpful is on the Ohio Department of Education website, if you dig down, there are documents that do crosswalks between the previous curriculum and the new curriculum, the revised curriculum. So you can see what chunks of content have been moved from which grade levels to where. And, and that, more than anything, you'll see is slimming down of content in an effort to provide more opportunity for students to engage in the content. So we'll go deeper and not, and not wider, is what you typically hear. So that's a great document for people interested in the content portion of those new standards. There's information in there as well as to the skill sets I'm referring to also embedded in those documents. So that's a great place to start. We've had internal conversation about starting to put together parent information regarding our curriculum and making that available. It's just a matter of catching up. And so that.
I understand.
That is one of our goals. So, a place we'd like to be very soon.
That's a good goal. So you actually segued right to another question that I have. And I'm not sure if you can answer this, or if we need some of our other professionals to answer this. When we look, I'm looking at the English one in particular at this point. How does the amount of fiction in the revisions compare to the amount of fiction in earlier iterations of our course of study? And the reason I'm asking this is because of consistent discussion around the reduction of fiction in favor of spreading nonfiction across Language Arts and the other disciplines as well. So I'm curious as to how that has impacted us.
So, so let's broaden that lens about informational text. And we tend to focus on the English Language Arts curriculum, which traditionally has weighed itself the other direction. And.
Yeah, I was an English teacher, yeah.
I was raised by an English professor. So the value of Romeo and Juliet was.
Yes.
Beat into my head. Not beaten, but certainly put there. So there probably needs to be a recalibration even within the English Language Arts. But let's go beyond that. How much reading are our students doing on a daily basis in their science class? Beyond one or two paragraphs, beyond just the highlighted words? How much reading in our social studies classes are our students doing around informational text, beyond, again, a couple paragraphs? Are we really digging into those? Have we had the time, or has the curriculum been so thick and required so much coverage that teachers really didn't have the opportunity to take time to digest even one-page documents? So there are skill sets associated with that. My premise is, don't teach social studies, teach how social scientists think. And that's a, that's a perspective difference. So how do social scientists teach, how do they think? How do historians think? They dissect information, they, they argue about it, they present alternative theories based on other information they found, and they present those. And that's effectively what they do. Same thing within science classes, and even same thing within math classes, understanding that an equation is nothing more than a form of communication done in numbers. Equation for a slope of a line is a form of communication. But we tend to look at it as what I like to call plug and chug. Put the numbers in and make it work, but don't understand what the, what the formula is really set up and designed to communicate to you, and why it works the way it does. That's a number sense, is being able to look at the equation, understand what it means. That's the kind of thinking we need from our students. So it goes a little bit beyond just the discussion that's been out there around informational text in Language Arts and, and traditionally what we read. The balance is broader across the spectrum. And so we're looking for, not necessarily less of one in English, but more of the other and the other disciplines where it lends itself. And probably some recalibration in English as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's a bit of a conundrum for me, because I know it's difficult for a number of English Language Arts teachers across the state as they look at these changes, and as they look at how that connects with evaluation processes. And there is concern about that. So as you say, we need to recalibrate across the disciplines, and we need to do so in ways that do not lay too much responsibility or blame where it doesn't belong.
The other two questions I have really apply to all of the courses of study, changes that are on this evening's agenda. And forgive me if you've answered this before. This is a, a new board member question. Can you please explain to me the level of involvement and the approval process that our teachers had in the process and the creation of these changes?
Our process fully involves teaching staff in the review and revision of those materials, usually through our teachers on special assignment who work with teachers at grade levels and in content areas to do the revisions. So that's a pretty standard practice. And I believe I've got that pretty accurate, Jen. Thank you. So they're, they're fully invested in it. Part of what has happened in recent history, this is in the commentary on whether it's right or wrong, is we effectively have moved from greater local control of what's in the curriculum when we taught, to a more regional, national, and state approach. And that being the new state standards from the state, and then Common Core. But let's not forget, those are standards. They're not the curriculum. The curriculum is ours. The curriculum just needs to be aligned to the standards we want for the outcomes for kids. So we oftentimes get confused by the standards and the curriculum, and they're two different, two different beasts. So the board and, and our teachers and the process we have give us great latitude in what the curriculum looks like. The standards are what we need to be moving towards.
I would think, if I didn't know better, because I'd seen you all evening, that you walked over here and looked at this piece of paper that has the questions on it. Because the last question that I have says, how much, and these are my questions, how much of a Westerville flavor does exist in the revisions versus how much is taken from the state or from Park?
And I, I think if you look through, if you start to compare courses of study with other districts, you'll start to see differences in the curriculum. And the most important piece in all this, for me, as an instructional leader, forget the written curriculum, forget the assessments. It's teaching practices.
Delivery.
It's all delivery. And we spend inordinate amounts of time and focus and resources on writing stuff and tests, and not enough on supporting our teachers and helping them do the implementation part well. It's like writing really grand blueprints for a house and turning it over to someone who doesn't know what a hammer looks like. We have great, great staff who need the room to operate around the teaching act, and less around the written curriculum and worrying about the assessments. And that is the balance act that exists right now. When you throw in the evaluation piece that you mentioned, their accountability to that, and how that's going to change, and all those pieces, at the end of the day, we sometimes get focused on the wrong part. It's the teaching act that's the most important part. And I congratulate our staff for helping us remember that. And those who've worked with me kind of know that's been my mantra from the day one on. So we're going to continue that focus.
Thank you, Jen. By the way, I am moving each of these separately, because I want to make sure that people do have the opportunity, if they choose to support one thing and not another, rather than moving them all as a lump sum. So with that, are there questions, additional questions about English Language Arts?
No, but you did a good job.
A couple of quick thoughts. Yeah, as one who was an English major and indoctrinated in Beowulf to Virginia Woolf, very passionate about that kind of literature being, being offered to our children, and allowing them to be exposed to just incredible fiction, which really has a, has the capacity to broaden the imagination, is kind of the way I look at it. Now, that being said, I'm also very excited to see a, maybe not a pushout of fiction in nonfiction. And I appreciate you kind of broadening that view. I think, I think we're, we're going to wrestle through this, we're going to wrestle through all this Common Core. You know, we're going to have all these discussions. I get that. But I have already begun to see, at least in my kids' education, sixth grade, fourth grade, both of them saying to me on separate occasions, before I indoctrinated them in anything that we're doing, "My teacher keeps telling me I have to go deeper into this, and I have to understand it more." And I said, "Well, son, I got news for you. That's like for the next twelve years of your life. That's the way it's going to be." So I, not so much a question, I think Nancy, Dr. Nestor Baker, you.
Nancy is fine.
Sorry. You know, I'll get this right.
Nancy is fine.
Madam President, I think you did that well. And I just, I just love the idea of trying to figure out, how does it horizontally, how does it vertically all kind of fit together so that the K to twelve thing happens, and then the, and then the twelfth grade, the graduation thing happens here, or spring, or whenever it is. And kids come out of here with this broad-based involvement in literature. And that can be science literature, social, whatever that literature is. Because if they're immersed in that, they will grow in that. And I don't know why I'm talking right now. I just wanted to kind of like say that. I, I just am very, I'm very committed to broadening and deepening this whole deal. And I think this piece of it, this English, English language piece is critical. And I, I love where it seems like, where it seems like it's headed.
I agree.
Seems like it. See, I'm just going to make a comment because everyone kind of knows in the past couple of years I've been anti-Common Core, and I still am. I feel like the Common Core, and I, believe me, I've done a lot of research, reading, thoughts, meditation on this, and, you know, I still can't get there. And I've talked with many people about it. So I'm concerned that we are being influenced by the state and national organization for curriculum, and as a result, we do not have the input for the local teachers to be able to do their own thing. They have to teach to the books that they have, to the tests that are going to be given, which are the Park tests. They have to actually prepare our students for those tests if we go with this Common Core curriculum all the way through. So that, you know, they're being trained to be able to do this. And of course, they've got to know how to teach it based on the thousands, millions of dollars that we're eventually spending for our new textbooks of Common Core. So I still have that concern for our local district, and I guess that has not left me yet. So I feel that there's not a proven test on the Common Core, there's not been any proof that this is going to make our kids better by the time they graduate, by the time they go on to college, whatever it is for. And of course, we want to raise the bar, and that's what they say the Common Core does. But I have not been able to be sold on it yet. So I'm just throwing out my two cents as I did a couple of years ago, all the way through. So, thank you.
Any other comments? We could talk about this for hours, and I wish we had the time to do that. But hearing no other particular comments at this point in time, if we could have the roll for 11.01.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. French.
No.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. The revisions to the English Language Arts course of study have been approved. Moving on to 11.02, this is the final reading on the recommendation to adopt a revised 9 through 12 mathematics course of study. Could I have a motion to bring this to the table, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
With a motion and a second, thank you both very much. Are there comments or questions about the mathematics course of study?
Yeah, I'm not going to talk along this time. We had concern expressed previously, people had talked about the whole finance piece, in other words, real-life math. And I love this financial algebra piece, so I mean, I just appreciate that being addressed. I just think math needs to be made real-world as well as theory. So that's it.
And going back to that discussion earlier before we were on the board, I also have some concerns that the stats course is not here. That worries me a great deal. I understand all the comments that have been made, I understand about the new standards, I understand the state's right to make that our rule of standards. However, I do firmly believe that there is tweaking that needs to be done, and I think that we need to be very much aware of where we are going, what we are doing, what courses we are offering. And as we broaden, and as we broaden in one way and yet deepen in another, that we don't inadvertently lose stuff that we think is extremely important. And so I encourage us, as we look at this, to bring back to us, if you would, to bring back a sense of how we're progressing, and also to let us know what appears to be missing as we look at what we may need to add to our curriculum here in Westerville. Any comments or questions additionally, John?
Just keep in mind that the courses you see there are not the complete high school courses of studies.
Correct.
And we've talked about embedded statistics within here. Jen, am I right?
Statistics embedded, in fact, there's a top-day waiver session, session course, grade six and seven, because of the increased statistics expectations for our students. So it's embedded within the other courses, and we will further examine courses for your options for our students.
Are we offering AP stats now?
We do not offer.
Okay. That would be a good place to go.
Sure would. Thank you, Jen, and that's what I remembered you saying at the earlier meeting. And that also, by the way, John, what you just said goes back to what I was saying. I went, when we present these pieces, I think the board would like to see, what does it look like, K-12, and what courses are offered, so that we have a sense of who gets what when?
I do believe the board adopts our entire course of study, did they adopt the entire course of study book at some time before we start scheduling, or is it just, okay?
Just.
Okay.
So what we're saying is that with each of these changes that we're voting on, we've changed the course of study, not just the courses themselves, so that you understand what we're nattering about up here. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, the roll, please.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. French.
No.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. The recommendation to adopt the revised 9 through 12 mathematics course of study has been approved, and we move on to 11.03, which is the recommendation to adopt a revised 9 through 12 science course of study. Revisions here concern biology courses. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, are there questions, concerns, clarifications around the revisions to the science course of study?
Dr. Nestor Baker, you, in 11.02 comment made me think about this. Could you all, I think, I think what I'm curious about is, what are we offering now that we, if we adopt this, and any of the others, it's kind of a, it's kind of this broader question, I think, I'm like, what are we offering now that we will not be offering if we adopt this one, for example, 1103?
The difference, these are just courses we currently offer.
Okay.
So there's not a loss of a course or gain of a course. These have been revised to the new state standards.
Okay.
The other point of clarification I think I should make is that references to Common Core are English Language Arts mathematics. That's the Common Core curriculum. There is no Common Core for science or social studies. So our science adoption and our social studies adoption reflect what's been done in the past, where the state sets standards and local school districts, local boards of education and school districts align their curriculum to the state's standards. So that's a difference here, this is not Common Core, this is state standards, and we've aligned with it. So we don't lose a course or gain a course, it's just a revision of that course.
Is there a projection that it's coming, a Common Core, or do we know the state's going to go that way?
Not that I've heard of.
Yeah, I haven't either, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you, and that's the reason I asked the question, is because I think that there is a common misunderstanding about what the new standards, Common Core, whatever you call them, does cover, doesn't cover. And I was asked that question that I just asked, so what are we losing if we adopt this? And my understanding was, no, this is a retooling of these courses that we're really not losing anything. So that's, really, that's how, I think really that goes back to the idea of, can we, and that's partly our role, can we just kind of continue to help the public understand what's offered, how it all fits together, just in really common Rick Velardo language, you know, how it all kind of meshes out together? That's what I think you were talking about in the vertical and horizontal. Okay. Thank you, that's, thank you.
And in fact, there aren't any courses in Common Core, there are standards for grade levels, so none of the courses we see on here this evening would be part of that.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions about biology? Hearing none, the roll, please.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Dr. French.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. The revisions to the 912 science course of study have been approved. And moving on to our last item in this section, this is 11.04, the final reading, recommendation to adopt the revised 9 through 12 social studies course of study. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, are there comments or questions around the changes to what was called, or what is currently called, U.S. and Global History III, and what we will move to be calling Modern World History? Are there comments or questions about these changes that are different than the ones we already said? Hearing none, social studies gets a pass on the comments. Laura.
Dr. French.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. The revisions to the 912 social studies course of study have been approved. Moving on to item 12 on the agenda, this is recommended action, new business, and there isn't any. Don't worry, we will still meet. That means we can move on to item number 13, recommended action, standing business, and under 13.01, we have donations. And it's always breathtaking to look at the level of support that our citizens give to this particular school district in so many ways. And these particular donations, as always, confirm the level of support and connectedness that people feel to the school system. Mr. Chakowski?
Thank you, President Nestor Baker, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. Before you this evening is a current donation valuation, or value of $10,002.37. That does bring our year-to-date current to $146,765.20. Like Dr. Nestor Baker said, it is quite flattering when we do bring these to you, they are in-kind and monetary donations. Do you want to make one point out, or one shout out, or bring attention to one item? And it is the $5,000 donation from Mr. Gregory Mitchell to the district. Just wanted to make clear, let you aware that Mr. Mitchell has made that donation to establish the Lori Sherman Memorial Scholarship Fund, and that has created, on behalf of, or in memory of Lori Sherman, who recently passed away. She was a food service worker at McVeigh Elementary School, and what they continue to call their lunch lady. So it is fitting to call that one out, not to overshadow the other donations brought for you. It's my recommendation that the board approve the donations as presented this evening.
Thank you, and now I'll back into, could I have a motion on this, please?
I move that we accept our donations.
Thank you, could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion and second on donations, are there comments or questions regarding what Mr. Chakowski had to say? Hearing none, would you call the roll, Laura?
Dr. French.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
Yes.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes, the donations have been approved. Moving on to item 13.02, this is a resolution declaring impracticality to transport identified students. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Ooh, it's a harmony second, great. With a motion and a second, who gets this?
Well, I'm going to turn it over to Randy Snyder from the Transportation Department. Before I do, I want to thank these folks over there for their hard work the last couple of days. There's a bunch of us up at about 4:00, 4:30 in the morning trying to figure out what we're going to do, and so I know it's been a long day for him and that group, so we thank them for their hard work, and I'll turn this over to them. Randy?
Thank you, Dr. Kellogg. Dr. Nestor Baker, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. This evening before you, under 13.0, is a resolution declaring impracticality to transport identified students. Ohio law allows for public schools to determine impracticality of transportation after considerations of a number of factors, such as the cost of providing transportation and the number of students transported. Back on August 7th of 2013, the board passed a resolution declaring five students impractical for transportation. Attached and before you this evening is a list of eight additional students that have been deemed impractical to transport. A few talking points for this evening, the Office of Purchasing and Logistics has evaluated each listed private school student per the requirements of Section 3327.02 of the Ohio Revised Code and declared the listed students before you impractical to transport. Approving this resolution this evening would allow the district to offer a payment in lieu of transportation in the manner provided by and per the Ohio Revised Code. The payment in lieu amount is determined by the state of Ohio. So by approving this board resolution this evening to declare these students impractical for transportation, and it would so offer them a payment in lieu of transportation. Any questions from you this evening?
Any questions for Mr. Snyder? Any comments? Hearing none, the roll, please.
Mr. Velardo.
Yes.
Dr. French.
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson.
I'm going to abstain.
Dr. Nestor Baker.
Yes. The resolution declaring impracticality to transport identified students has been approved. Moving on to the second portion of public comment, these public comments, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, are comments that are for the good of the order, and as with all public comments sections on our agenda, speakers may have up to five minutes to speak, and if you hit that five-minute mark, you will be told time is up, and you will need to finish your sentence and be seated. With that, we have three people signed up to speak this evening. The first person is Peg Duffy.
I noticed that you have listed for the next board meeting a work session. I certainly support this. In the last decade, we would have avoided a lot of problems in this district if the public had seen the board working through all the problems. If we had been privy to the discussion, there would have been much greater understanding. So I certainly support this. Now, my question is, is this going to be functioning, the entire meeting as committee of the whole? Will there be any action taken? Will you not follow Robert's Rules of Order so that you can do this? In other words, how are you going to conduct this? My concern is, if you, at the beginning of the meeting, say, okay, we're going to set aside Robert's Rules of Order, if you made some financial decision and you had not come back under Robert's rules, many of the opponents to decisions you make would fault you for that. So I think you need to be very careful as to if action is going to be taken on anything at these work session meetings, that there's a separation between committee of the whole and action being taken under the regular Robert's Rules of Order.
Thank you. The second speaker, Susan, I apologize if I maul your last name, Susan Bruckto.
Good evening, and it's okay about the last name, it happens all the time, it's Bruckato.
Dang.
Very close. I know it looks like there should be an A in there, but there's not, so that's perfectly fine.
Thank you, I'll remember that.
I'm here tonight just to talk a little bit about Emerson's Kendall Club. We were asked just kind of to come and give our thoughts tonight. You guys have discussed a little bit about language arts, and that kind of, to me, kind of fit. You said something about deepening and broadening things for language arts, and I think that's one point that the Kendall Club does. Ms. Stalen has done a great job with getting the Otterbine students and Emerson together and working on some things. I have a fifth grader there, so this would be his last year there, and I hope that other kids will be able to take advantage of this program, sorry. I don't do very well with public speaking, and when I talk about my kids, I get really emotional, so I apologize. Anyway, this is a great program, not only because this is free to us as parents, there was a grant that got the Kindles started for the children, and I'm able to drop Little Ricky off in the mornings, and he has an hour of one-on-one time. He has dyslexia, so it's very hard for him. This is a wonderful program, and I really hope you guys understand that and really look at this program for every student out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Allison Skora. Did I butcher that one, too? Did I butcher that one, too? Oh, good. So that's a 66% passage rate. That means I did not, I am not proficient on names this evening.
Oh, my gosh, don't worry about it. Well, along the same kind of theme, I'm the parent of a third-grade student at Emerson Magnet School, and really, I'm here to say thank you. It seems so many times we have negatives and criticism of a lot of the things that happen in the school district here at the minute, but I believe thank you's brighten people's day and make them feel valued, and that's probably very, taken on a very American value there for a British person. Way back. I know, I try, I try. Way back at the beginning of the school year. My daughter, Neve's teacher, Mrs. Dalen, already mentioned this evening, asked me if I thought it would be a benefit for Neve to attend the early morning Kindle Club, which she was setting up at Emerson. Basically, trying to cut a long story short, because I do have a habit of chatting on, basically, the kids would be reading and working on Kindles with the Otterbine students assigned to them. This was for an hour before school started and for a number of days in the week. Now, in Neve's case, the emphasis was to bring on her writing and comprehension, which is something we, I heard with glee earlier, by reading, 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 which just brings everything out. It struck a chord with me. Neve was really excited, and she was wanting to be a part of the group. She felt part of something special. She loved being with her Otterbine student, Sammy, and the Kindle was apparently pretty awesome, too. From my point of view, her self-esteem has been enhanced and her reading level. Her reading actually wasn't an issue. She was on grade level, but this has sort of enhanced the way she could use her reading. This is what the aim was in our instance. Now, she has tested at advanced level in reading, and she's jumped two levels on the AR testing, the all-powerful AR, which has pleased me immensely, as you can imagine. I think she's experienced a huge leap in confidence and skills because of the support she's received, and she now chooses to read books which are more challenging and happily writes about what she finds in them. It's a bit of a light bulb switching on moment for her. I'd also like to point out that this Kindle Club seems to me to represent a total win-win situation. How amazing is it that this small program, it is small, is one in which all of those involved gain confidence, experience, and skills for ongoing education? Plus, I believe the Otterbine students get credit. So it's not just the littlies, it's the Otterbine students, too, and I see them trolling in there every day, 8:00 in the morning, and I'm dropping my daughter off. So I credit Mrs. Dalen. This is my thank you, too, with the inspiration for and setting up of this small but powerful program. And for having, also, I'll credit Mrs. Dalen, too, for having to get Neve a Kindle for Christmas. That was amazing on her list. So thank you to the Otterbine students who've helped Neve, and the other Emerson students, also. They've helped them all gain tools in their education. And it just, to me, goes to show that learning and teaching can be fun and not just about the grinding out of testing mechanisms. I believe that the soul of teaching, and I'm not a teacher, I'm just a mom, I was a designer by trade back in the day in England, I believe the soul of teaching is in recognizing the individual way kids learn and feeding it. And I think, I feel very encouraged and thankful that this little inspiration comes into being. So many, many thanks. Oh, 1:17.
Could I ask you a question?
You certainly can. You've only got 1:30.
I see. Do you happen to know how many little ones take part in that Kindle program?
Not an exact figure, because, you know, beyond with mine, there's certain ones that I know from third grade, but I know it goes to other grades as well. There's only the third grade and up remaining at Emerson Magnet, which is another discussion, but I don't know exactly how many. But I will hazard a guess that it is across the board of abilities. I mean, the lady before me mentioned her person as...
Yes.
...learning disability, if you want to put it that way. I'm sorry, the wrong thing. But, you know, I know from having volunteered there, the children involved in this group, some have got specific difficulties with reading, and, but with my daughter, you know, she was just needing that extra oomph to get her to think about and broaden how she thinks about it, to be able to write about and have the confidence to do it. So, that's something. She's in the middle bit. You know, we talk about the kids who are really, really needing the help, the low percentages, and then we have these amazing kids, and my gosh, those kids in that class that are reading at sixth and seventh grade.
Yes.
But the only ones in the middle get forgotten, too. You know? This really, go and see the Kindle Club, go and ask about it, because it's an amazing way of doing it. And Otterbine students, too. I mean, I think, I believe, they're even free.
Okay. Yeah. They get credit, though.
They get the credit back, they pay them.
Yes. Well, thank you.
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 15, board comments. Anyone around this table have anything that they would like to say?
I do.
Okay.
I want to say thank you first to all the speakers. You guys are fantastic. And Susan, I understand it is so hard to get up there. I hate to speak in public. And my heart goes out, too. I also have a child that has difficulties, and an opportunity to work one-on-one in the morning, phenomenal, phenomenal. And I think we need to give kudos to Beth Dalen for starting that partnership, and she volunteers her time also every morning, so here's another teacher, just go on the extra mile. And I truly appreciate that. I think there are 12 kids participating in the morning, because Westerville Education Challenge actually provided that grant. But also in the afternoon, I know at lunchtime, this is like the golden ticket to be in this club, that other kids are now doing it at lunchtime, and parents are coming in and facilitating that. So I think that's fantastic. Rick, you forgot two announcements. I can't believe it after that whole list.
Thank you.
So, two things that are also happening. Challenge Day this week. Challenge Day is an anti-bullying program, and it's hosted at three of our high schools, and it's kind of happening if we can have school, but that's not.
Oh, sorry.
So anyhow, I think that's a fantastic program, and community mentors actually help with that, and I think there are over 100 this year that are helping. And one last thing, GEM nominations are due Thursday, February 6th, and if you need to find a form, it's in the virtual backpack. And that's it. Thank you.
I'm passing. Thank you. Rick, anything you'd like to say?
In my written announcements, I mentioned Challenge Days, but I won't read that now, because she said it already. But it is an awesome anti-bullying program, and if you are not involved in it this year, when you hear it coming down the pike next year, I hope you'll consider being a volunteer in that program. Last week, last meeting, we did a lot of thank yous and for having us on the board and so on. And I, this is just me, I would like to personally thank Kevin Hoffman, Denise Pope, and Kristy Robins for the work that they collectively have done for many, many years, just bringing us where we are. Doesn't mean we would have all voted the same way, but I wanted to thank them publicly, and I'm sorry I didn't do that, um, last time. For the graduates, it's just awesome. I, that's really like, one of the coolest things I think we will probably get to do, is to send them out. Maybe just one other quick, Mrs. Davidson and I were able to attend some training and workshop with the Ohio School Board Association, OSBA, and one of the things they talked about was the, the community involvement in your schools. And I was stunned by the number of school districts that said they did not have an ongoing consistent press presence at their meetings, and that they were often not filmed, or not broadcast, or any of that deal. So, I don't know if it sounds strange or not, but I want to thank Jennifer Nesbit, S&amp;P, all of those folks who are consistently here and trying to report what we do. And TV, and, yeah, there he is, back there waving. I just, I'm just glad we're a part of a community in which the media takes an interest. I was, I was stunned by how many communities, school districts, did not have that. So I thought, wow, that's really a blessing. And last deal for, for the Kindle Club and the folks at Huber Ridge. I will, I will fight to see that you keep getting to do good educational stuff. The real good news is, though, that I don't think we'll have to fight much about that, because I think everybody's seated from stem to stern up here and in these first rows want to see all that kind of stuff successful as well. So, awesome Kindle, awesome Huber. Thank you for what you're doing.
Any other comments? I don't have anything inspiring at all to say. I did want to address Peg's comments as regards the sessions that are called work sessions. What we will do in these sessions, it's always worried me when we call them work sessions, because that's not technically a term that is usually used when we talk about public meetings. However, what we will be doing in the work sessions, the entire board will be there, we will be operating as a committee of the whole. We will follow all of our policies and procedures as related to meetings. We will follow all of the requirements of us by the Sunshine Law. And, you know, Robert's rules are how we run our meetings. The overriding component of our meetings, though, would be the policy component and, well, obviously, the legal component. So you can expect a fair amount of discussion. If there are to be any actions taken at this session of the Board of Education, those actions would be taken in public in accordance with law and policy as permitted. Otherwise, they won't happen. With that, could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Everybody's always... I can tell. I move we adjourn. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Wait.
All the roll?
On adjourn. [end of transcript]